May the fifteenth, welcome to our Board of Commissioners meeting. I've asked Commissioner Tosterson to do the invocation and Commissioner Duncan to do the pledge. Would you please stand?
Dear Father God, thank you for allowing us to live in such a wonderful place. Thank you for allowing us to be here and to be able to govern and help people in this, in our community in the ways that we do. Bless all of us here tonight. Bless our community. All in your son Jesus, precious holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have some proclamations tonight. First one is National Safe Boating Week proclamation. Mr. Hilliard, you here? Okay. And your other two can join, but I'm gonna read the proclamation and then please come up. Boating is a favorite activity for over 100 million Americans. To promote safety on the water, National Safe Boating Week encourages all boaters to be prepared, wear life jackets, and practice responsible boating. The U.S. Coast Guard reports that human error is the leading cause of accidents and most drowning deaths could be prevented with life jacket use. Whereas about 650 people die annually in boating accidents in the U.S., and 75% of those deaths are due to drowning, whereas most of the incidents result from human error, not equipment or weather. Whereas many lives could be saved each year if the life jackets were worn. Now therefore, the Glen County Board of Commissioners proclaims May 17th through 23rd, 2025 as National Safe Boating Week and supports efforts to promote boating safety and life jacket use. And let me get this inside it. If y'all come up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate all your support. Thank you.
You can say if you weren't. You're welcome to say if you weren't.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Phil Hilliard. I'm with the Coast Guard Auxiliary. I'm here with Chief Ryan from the active duty and one of our staff officers, Wayne Lancaster. And we support, the Auxiliary is the all voluntary unit of the Coast Guard, and we support the active duty and what they do. Our primary mission is boating safety, and that's why we are, we appreciate the support that we're getting from the county on National Safe Boating Week. And we do things like training, recreational boating safety training, vessel exams, we promote life jacket wearing and so forth. And so we appreciate everybody's support in the community here. Thank you.
Just a few more words to add to that. I'm Tim Ryan. I'm the executive officer of Station Brunswick. As Mr. Hilliard said, the local auxiliary flotilla. Just a few points that they already touched on. Key points, always wear a life jacket. Second, if your vessel is equipped with an engine kill switch, always utilize. And the third piece, most important is having a float plan. Know that, know that somebody knows where you're going as well as when to expect you home. But thank you for the support, all the Commissioners. Thank you very much.
Okay, next up is National Police Week proclamation. In 1962, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, the week surrounding as National Police Week. Therefore, be it observed, May 11th through 17th, 2025, the National Law Enforcement Memorial and Museum will honor fallen officers during events such as the 37th Annual Candlelight Vigil. This year, 345 officers' names are being added to the memorial in Washington, D.C., 148 from 2024, and 197 from previous years, bringing the total to 24,412. Now therefore, the Board, the Glen County Board of Commissioners proclaims May 11th through 17th, 2025 as National Police Week and honors the service and sacrifice of law enforcement professionals in Glen County, Georgia, and across the United States.
Yes, sir.
the officers that have served and continue to serve every day. We did have four officers there this week. They attended the Candlelight Vigil, so it just shows our dedication to support those that have served and gave the ultimate price when they, they lost their lives in line of duty. So thank you.
All right, this is National EMS Week proclamation. May 18th through 24th, 2025, emergency medical services EMS are vital part of public health and safety, providing lifesaving care 24/7. EMS professionals, including paramedics, EMTs, dispatchers, and firefighters, nurses, and physicians, play a critical role in responding to medical emergencies and filling healthcare gaps throughout, out of hospital care. Their dedication, training, and service saves lives and improve outcomes every day. Now therefore, the Glen County Board of Commissioners recognizes May 18th through 24th, 2025, as National EMS Week, honoring the contributions and commitment of EMS professionals. Chief? You know, I want Chief to say a few words about how many actual paramedics, EMTs, we actually have. Glen County is blessed.
Yes, sir. Actually, I'm gonna let Chief Johnson, our division chief of EMS, update on our numbers and what we do out in the field with the total community effort.
Good evening. Currently, we have right at about 40 paramedics, the same number of advanced EMTs, and right around 30 EMTs. Currently, about 95% of our workforce are dual trained, firefighter EMS certified. So we're fortunate, we're thankful for the Commission to fund us and to support everything that we're doing. Again, it's all prehospital care, you know, before, you know, intervening before the physicians can do their part. I'm not well at speaking, so I'm a little nervous.
And Mr. Chairman, as a point of privilege, while you're returning, as I look over on this side of the room and I see all the men and women in black and white, I can't help but say a thank you to all of our first responders for all you do for Glen County. And just adding, that's a fine looking group of men and women that I'm looking at. So thank you so much for your service. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna move on to the swearing in of the new Assistant Fire Chief. Chief, will you join me?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for allowing us tonight to hold this ceremony, which is the, I know, when I had this, it was a highlight in my career, and I can assure you, it's a highlight in Chief Morrison's career. So without further ado, we will administer the oath of office. In attendance with her, joining her is her husband, is it Deputy Chief or Assistant? Deputy Chief Chris Morrison from Liberty County Fire Rescue, and he will assist in the pending of the badge. So Chief Morrison, may please raise your right hand. I state your name.
Lee Morrison.
Having been appointed to the position of Assistant Fire Chief
Have been appointed to the position of Assistant Fire Chief.
In Glen County Fire Rescue, Glen County, Georgia.
In Glen County Fire Rescue, Glen County, Georgia.
Do hereby declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States
Do hereby declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Georgia.
And the state of Georgia.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same
To the same.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties.
Under the appointment of the department
Appointment of the department.
And in accordance with the laws of the state of Georgia
And in accordance with the laws of the state of Georgia.
Ordinances of Glen County
Ordinances of Glen County.
And the policies, procedures, and guidelines of Glen County Fire Rescue
And the policies, procedures, and guidelines of Glen County Fire Rescue.
And that I will faithfully discharge the office upon which I'm about to enter.
And I will faithfully discharge the office that I'm about to enter.
As a member of Glen County Fire Rescue
As a member of Glen County Fire Rescue.
I accept this self-imposed and self-enforced obligation
I accept this self-imposed and self-enforced
Enforce.
Enforced obligation.
As my responsibility
As my responsibility.
And I make these promises
And I make these promises.
Solemnly, freely, and upon my honor.
Solemnly, freely, and upon my honor.
Congratulations, Chief.
No, it's, it's fine, it's fine. I, I like to talk. But good evening, everyone, and thank you all for being here. I am happy to be here. I'm happy to be part of the team. And I'm looking forward to doing all the continued great work that Glen County Fire Rescue is doing, along with the wonderful people that I've gotten to meet so far since I've been here. So I'm looking forward to it, and I'm happy to be on this coastal side of town. And it's been great so far, and I just look forward to all the great things that we're gonna do together. Thank you.
All right, let's use this opportunity to make any changes to the published agenda, to pull items to be deferred or to add an item as necessary. Mr. Chairman, I propose that we defer item number 46, which is to consider the issuance of a 2025 alcoholic beverage license to Darshaun Patel for Majay Ambie O'One LLC DBA OM Smoke Shop at 275 Palace State Drive. Second. Okay, we have a motion to defer item 46 improperly motioned. In second, all in favor? Right hand? Vote. There we go. There we go. Thank you. And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to add item number 50 to the public's agenda to consider appointing one citizen to the Glen County Board of Elections and Registration to serve the unexpired term of Tommy Clark, as well as a new term beginning July 1, 2025 and ending June 30, 2029. The applicants are Sandy Dean and Kathleen Gallagher-Duff. Second. Okay, we're adding item 50 to the published agenda. All in favor? Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve our consent agenda general business, with the exception of any item a Commissioner wishes to pull. Second. No discussion? We're all good? Okay. Motion in second, all in favor? Consent agenda is done? Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda for finance, with the exception of any item a Commissioner wishes to pull. Second. Properly motioned and seconded to pull finance, I mean to approve finance. Any discussion? Okay, it's been properly motioned and seconded, all in favor? Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, public hearing, this is an appeal. Where's our note about the... Anyway, we're going to have a public hearing. There'll be 30 minutes. Each speaker will have five minutes. There'll be a for and against, and please stay on subject. Mr. Carey?
Yes, sir. Tonight, we have an appeal of a Board of Appeals decision. This is for application number ZV 25-3. The property is zoned R12, one-family residential located at 74 Wildlife Preserve on St. Simon's, parcel number 04-13822. Earl Sheagle is the property owner and should be, is he, should be present. All right. So the case that Mr. Sheagle had requested by the Board of Appeals for variance to the side yard setback was denied by the Board of Appeals. The request for, was for a reduction of setback by two feet to allow for the addition of a proposed laundry room. The required setback is seven feet, and the constructed home has a footprint of 34,000, 3,400 square feet on a 13,000 square foot lot. The current house is 11.3 feet away from the side property line, but the doorsteps and landing are within or intrude into the setback. Here's the site, Wildlife Preserve, Lot 13. And here is the location of the requested variance and the area of topic of concern. So as you see, the home is 11.3 feet away. Here's the seven-foot side yard setback, and here is the location of the stairs and landing. And here are the current conditions of the area. And here are some details from the Board of Commissioners meeting. After conducting the public hearing, the Board of Appeals did render a decision unanimously 5-0 in denial of the application. And here's the appeals letter from the property owner. And these are possible motions. Mr. Sheagle is here, and you have two choices to either affirm the Board of Appeals decision or to reverse the Board of Appeals decision. That is all from staff.
Any questions for Mr. Carey?
I do. How many square foot is this?
How, how many square foot is the, is the house? Do you know already as it sits?
Three thousand, four hundred, thirty-six square feet.
Okay. And, uh, how long has the applicant owned this property? Or do you know?
I don't know. I'll, I'll let the applicant, uh, address that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Could you place the, the site diagram one more time? Yeah. I have a question. In regards to the, excuse me. Did you hear? I'm done. Okay. Uh, in regards to the porch, that looks like that was an addition, uh, that exceeded the setback.
This porch right here?
Right.
This landing?
Yeah, it looks like the landing, looks like a, uh, grill, barbecue grill or something there. It was sitting on it like it was an addition to the, the step landing.
Yes, so the stairs are not in the setback, but a portion of that landing is in the setback. And it appears that it was constructed at some point in addition to.
Thank you.
Chris, is, is actually part of the structure of the house in the setback?
No, so this is a landscape wall. So this will be treated as, it wouldn't be treated as a wall of the house, but more like a fence.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions for staff? All right, this is a public hearing. We're gonna open it up to anybody in favor of this. Would you please come forward, state your name?
My name is Patricia Ann Barnador. And I'm gonna speak to you as a retired Realtor. And having come here before you many times and listed, listening to you waive setbacks for new developments. This gentleman, I think we're stepping on his property rights because you have no problem by letting your number one rule up here about the setbacks. You waive them continually for new development. This gentleman owns a home. He has the right to also appeal for that setback, sir. And also, but granted, like I said, I've been here many times and heard it, that you waive your setbacks continually. Why should this gentleman be treated any differently?
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else in favor? If you will, please step forward, state your name. That's including the applicant.
Hi, I'm Earl Schlegel. And, um.
Say that again, please.
Earl Schlegel.
Thank you.
And to answer the earlier question, um, I, we built that house almost sixteen years ago. And the reason why I didn't have a, um, a laundry room is be, we didn't think we were having a child. And we, we ended up having a child. And we were just using one of the veteran closets for the laundry room. And it just, all these years, it's just been very uncomfortable. And, um, you know, the, the addition is only like forty-eight square feet. And the reason why, we were gonna use one of those landscape walls as the sidewall and then just knock out, you know, this bad-looking stairway. And there wouldn't be a door going out the back anymore. So the garbage cans and all will get moved. And it just, it's gonna really clean it up for our neighbors. And then we're also gonna finally have a laundry space if you see fit. But again, it's, um, it's just, it comes out as far as that landscape wall comes, which is six feet out, which is two feet into the setback. And then just, um, I have pictures. I don't know. I, I tried to download them, but I couldn't. But so, um, yeah, I just, it, there's really nowhere else to, to put it. And again, it's, this would be just eight feet long and six feet deep. I don't know if you'd wanna, anybody wanna see what I've got here?
I don't either. On, on a variance, it's supposed to be a hardship. And, and there's self-imposed hardships. And then there's an actual hardship that, say, that got built before you bought the house. And now it got caught, so you come and that's usually when we consider, consider those. But I'm going to, uh, I'm gonna continue with the hearing and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Does you got anything else?
Um, no. Would, would anybody wanna pass these pictures?
Anybody?
It just kinda shows the generally state of it. And the, the, the first picture is the, the wall that comes out off the front of the house. And then it kinda.
Is, is that where the trash cans are stored? What, what he's, what Chris called a fence?
They're, they're next to the stairs and stuff. You'll see them in the pictures. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else wanna come up and speak in favor? You have already been up. No, ma'am. No one else? Well, as the pictures come around, now I'm gonna close the for and open the against. Uh, is there anybody in the audience against this appeal? Seeing none, I guess we'll close that. Are, are the pictures coming through?
May, may I ask a question?
You may, please.
Chris, uh, well, I guess I wanna ask the, the applicant. So you built this house without a laundry room?
Yes.
Would you please come back up?
So, yeah, like I said, when we were starting the building process, we were not pregnant and we ended up having a child. We actually moved in a month before he was born. But we just didn't see a need for, um, a space dedicated to laundry. And again, we ended up having it put in a closet in, in the guest bedroom. But it's just, it's not a laundry room, it's a closet. So had we known we were gonna have a child, um, when we designed the house and all, I'm sure we would have had a laundry room. And that stoop was, that was built when the house was built. And it was built before, you know, we got our CO. So, um, that has always been there.
But you, you have, you have a laundry room?
I have, well, I have it in a closet. And I'm lucky to ask me that.
So, um, you, you do have a space where you can wash and dry your clothes?
I do, yes. I just was hoping I could have a dedicated laundry room and have a closet back in the bedroom.
And the stoop that you built, it looks like it was added on to, to provide for grill space? And that's what got into the encroachment, I mean, from the pictures that we saw provided by staff?
Um, maybe, but, um, but it, it goes out to the landscape wall that, um, in, into the setback as well. I think it rotted and when it was repaired, they may have just gone thinking that we'll just go to the end, um, to the, to even, into that wall. Does that make sense?
Uh, yes, sir. I, I understood what you said.
Okay, did I close the, uh,
Public hearing?
Against the public hearing? I think I did. Well, I'm closing it now. Commissioners, it's to you.
Yeah, I think that's where we were. That's why I asked.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. I'll move to affirm the denial of case number ZV twenty-five three by Board of Appeals.
Second.
Good job.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Duncan, a second by either Commissioner Clark or. And Swett.
Can you reread the motion again?
Uh, to affirm the denial. So the Board of Appeals denied the request. And my motion is to affirm that denial. Meaning that you can't build into the setback.
Right. Okay. Well, any discussion, gentlemen?
Could you get a second?
Yeah. Okay. All in favor? Show of hands. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we're gonna move on to number forty-two, alcohol beverage license. Public hearings will be limited to thirty minutes for each opposing side, with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the allotted time. Your cooperation in this process is greatly appreciated. Number forty-two is consider issuance of a twenty-twenty-five alcohol beverage license to, I'm sorry, I really can't get the, Kim, Kim Bell, Kim Belli Patel for Ash Tori Ma Brunswick LLC DBA Comfort Suites, twenty-five Ashton Drive, Brunswick, Georgia. License is for retail package sales malt beverages and wine at a hotel, not for consumption on presidents, premises. Sunday sales permitted. Kim Bellish Patel licensee. Chief?
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, Mr. Patel, are you here from Conference Suites? Okay. The applicant is here. And, uh, based on his, uh, background application, um, there was nothing that was discovered that would preclude you from approving it if you decide to.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the chief?
None.
All right, well, now I open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to come up and, that is opposed to this? You'll have five minutes. Seeing none, we'll close that portion. Is there anybody wants to come up and speak in favor? You may. Please state your name.
Yes, sir. This is Patricia Ann Barnador speaking to you on behalf of the hotel selling those beverages. We allow that through our community and other businesses and other hotels. And I think that they should be extended that right as well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wish to come up and speak in favor? Seeing none, we'll close that portion. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, license of the twenty-twenty-five alcoholic beverage license to Mr. Patel, uh, Brunswick LLC DBA Comfort Suites, twenty-five Ashton Drive, Brunswick, Georgia.
Second.
Okay. Properly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Patel. Number forty-three is consider the issuance of a license of a twenty-twenty-five alcoholic beverage license to Lawrence Gibson, Gibson of Breezy's Bistro LLC, doing business as Breezy's Bistro, one thirty-five Shoppers Way. License is to sell malt beverages, wine, and liquor for consumption on premises of a restaurant. Sunday sales permitted. Lawrence Gil, Gibson licensee. Chief?
Mr. Gibson, are you here? Okay. Again, on this, uh, background investigation, uh, that was conducted, um, there was nothing in his background that would preclude him from being approved if you so desire.
Thank you, chief. Commissioners, any questions?
None.
All right, we're gonna open the public hearing. Anyone opposed to this, would you please come forward, state your name? You'll have five minutes. Seeing none, anybody in favor of this application? Please come forward, state your name.
Patricia Ann Barnador, and I think that absolutely he should get it because, guess what? We extend that to all the other restaurants. And this gentleman is trying to get his business off the ground. I think that we should help him to do that.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wish to speak in favor? Seeing none, we'll close that portion. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion to approve the issuance of a twenty-twenty-five alcoholic beverage license to Lawrence Gibson for Breezy's Bistro LLC DBA Breezy's Bistro, one thirty-five Shoppers Way, Brunswick, Georgia.
Second.
Okay, properly motioned and seconded. Commissioners, all in favor? Thank you. You have your license. Well, I guess after Ms. Kinsel gets done, you'll have your license. Number forty-four is consider the issuance of a twenty-twenty-five alcoholic beverage license to Harish Patel for Sri Shiv Shanti LLC DBA True by Hilton, three ten Frontage Road, Brunswick, Georgia. License is for retail package sale of malt beverages and wine at a hotel, not for consumption on premises. Sunday sales are permitted. Harish Patel licensee. Chief?
Mr. Patel? The applicant is here. And I, again, Commissioners, um, background was conducted. There was nothing that came up that would preclude, uh, Mr. Patel from being approved.
Thank you, chief. Any questions for the chief? All right, we're gonna open the public hearing. Anybody wanna come up and speak against this application? Seeing none, we'll close that portion. Anyone wanna come up and speak in favor of this application? You know the drill.
Patricia Barnador, and I'd like to say that I'm pro-business in Brunswick, Georgia, folks. And I'm definitely gonna back you. Go get it. I love a true Hilton. Guess what? It's pet-friendly. I'm not a drinker. But I say, look, let's do it, folks. If we wanna really welcome people, they wanna have a little bit of drink when they're coming off of vacation here, let them do so. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wanna come up and speak in favor? Seeing none, we'll close that portion. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve issuance of twenty-twenty-five alcoholic beverage license to Harish Patel for Sri Shiv Shanti LLC DBA True by Hilton, three ten Frontage Road, Brunswick, Georgia. License is for retail package sales of malt beverages and wine at a hotel, not for consumption on premises. Sunday sales permitted.
Second.
Okay, properly motioned and seconded. All in favor? You have, you have it, sir. Thank you. All right, number forty-five is consider the issuance of a provisional twenty-twenty-five alcoholic beverage license to Buc-E's Brunswick LLC, doing business as Buc-E's, located at sixty-nine hundred Highway ninety-nine, Brunswick, Georgia. This provisional license is to sell malt beverages and wine at a convenience store, not for consumption on prom, proper premises. Sunday sales are permitted. Peggy Sue Cochrane licensee. Chief?
Commissioners, uh, Ms. Cochrane, are you present? Yes, she is. Based on her background investigation, there was nothing that came up in the background that would preclude her from being approved if you decide.
Thank you, chief. Any questions? Okay, let's open the public hearing. Anyone opposed to this application? Seeing none, how about in favor of this application?
Buc-E's. My name is Patricia Barnador. Welcome to the community. Do it, girl. I'm very proud that you were able to overcome our good old boy system and break the bank. You brought the governor with you when you did it. Proud of you. Now, as far as the provisional, I don't think provisional is very good. I think they should have the permanent one. They're out here on the highway. They're gonna bring us a whole lot of money on top of the fact that their pay scale is outstanding. They're offering benefits for our people that live here. It's a pathway to a better life. I say let them have it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I think they applied for provisional, wasn't us. They applied for provisional. Okay. Anybody else wanna speak in favor? Seeing none, close that portion. Commissioners?
I'll offer the motion to approve the issuance of provisional twenty-twenty-five alcoholic beverage license to Buc-E's Brunswick LLC DBA Buc-E's, located at sixty-nine hundred Highway ninety-nine, Brunswick, Georgia. The provisional license is to sell malt beverages and wine at, at a conven- Provisional license is to sell malt beverages and wine at a convenience store, not for consumption on premises. Sunday sales permitted.
Second.
Okay, properly motioned and seconded, Commissioners, all in favor? You have your license, thank you, ma'am. All right, next one's a public hearing, abandonment. Well, that's green-cheated. No, it was been pulled.
Okay, that's right, I'm sorry.
Okay. Number forty-seven, abandonment, A B dash nineteen dash three, considered abandonment of an unimproved area on the west boundary of parcel of parcel of oh-four dash two-six, oh-two-six-seven-three, two-eleth, two-forty-one Broadway Street, F-eight LLC, and Michael W. Griffith applicants. Mr. Hartman?
Good evening Commissioners. Do you have our presentation? Pretty sure we did.
Aren't we having fun?
See if you can go that way later.
Oh, I'll see it in there. Jason, do you wanna borrow my iPad? I've got it on.
Do they have it up there?
Y'all just talk amongst yourselves while we get this straightened out. We apologize.
This is kind of the way my week's gone. No, no. There we go.
That's good.
There we go.
It can be, but what do you...what's missing? Jason, can you email it to...you still have it on your phone? Can you access your sent message to email it again? Commissioners, people who move over to the next side will get full, full of this presentation to get it prepared.
Okay. All right, we'll do that. We will skip forty-seven, go to forty-eight, and then come back to forty-seven. Forty-eight is ZV dash twenty-five dash fifteen, one-oh-one McKenzie Drive, signed variance, consider request from a variance from section eight-ten dash two. Zoning ordinance to allow for more than three permitted signs and more than five-hundred square feet signage on the subject site. The site is owned Howie Commercial and is located at one-oh-one McKenzie Drive, parcel number oh-three dash one-seven-six-four-one, Karen Dodge Municipal Resolutions, applicant for Circle K Stores LLC. Mr. Carey?
Yes, sir. Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Before you tonight, we have a variance application at one-oh-one McKenzie Drive. The request is for additional signage over the zoning requirement. The request is for two ground signs and square footage over the required five-hundred square feet. Here is the site. It's at the corner of McKenzie Drive and New Jessup Highway. And here's the survey. Again, the request is for variance to the sign ordinance. There is an open permit, SGN twenty-five dash twenty-eight, which was applied for on April third. Had a combined square footage of eight-hundred-six as well as two ground signs in the package. The applicant has stated that sign visibility for passing motorists, difficulty of semi-trucks in moving around the site, and not enough signage to allow for proper promotion of goods and services as their hardship. And here's a diagram of what is allowed and what is presented. Five-hundred square feet is allowed. Eight-hundred-six is presented. And the two ground signs account for four-hundred-and-twelve square feet. And again, here's their stated hardship. With the request for two ground signs and additional square footage of signage.
There you go, that's the one I was looking for.
And here is the presented signage. So you have your canopy signage, the two pylon signs in question, and the various Circle K emblems as well as Subway. So they are allowed three signs per business, so they could have three Subway signs, three Circle K signs. And just the site plan of all the located signage. So you have signage on the canopy, on the store, and then two ground signs along McKenzie. So that's where those two large pylon signs would be. And these are your possible motions, and Karen Dodge should be here on behalf of the application.
Can you go, can you go back one? So the two big signs are on McKenzie?
Yeah, so it should be the MID sign.
Okay. So one's out?
Yep. One's right here, right at, essentially at the intersection, and the other is on McKenzie.
Okay.
Doesn't it point Chris over further in McKenzie? Doesn't that area go down? Looks like it. Get almost to the curve in McKenzie.
This one right here?
Take a cursor to the left, a little bit more to the left, no, and down to where the flag is. Come back up where you were. Come on up, straight up.
Keep coming.
Straight up, straight up, right there.
Yep.
That's where it indicates it would be.
Yes, sir.
So is that, are the two pylon signs the same?
Yes. So it would be these signs right here.
Well, this is like showing, one of them showing the drink now, like a soft drink?
Yes, sir. One has what looks to be a beverage, and then the other doesn't. That is correct.
So the one on the left sign, mid-sign A, that bottom placard that shows a soft drink there, I think that's the electronic sign, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And Commissioners, if this were a building that had two storefronts in it, which this does, Subway could apply for a second sign for the building as an independent business. I talked to Ms. Leaf about this last week. And so, if you look at it that way, I don't think it exceeds. So that's my thoughts on it.
And I agree.
Chris, for clarification, looking at these diagrams, I'm looking at the ones on the canopy, let's say Circle K, multiple ones, and then over to the right, there's indications of the product being sold. And directional sign on the canopy, like do not enter, and then other for the opposite side, enter. But do each of those signs count in that total square footage?
They count in the square footage, but they don't count as an individual sign.
Right, so they make up a part of the eight-hundred square feet approximately?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Chris, can you go back a page? No, I want the, no, the other one, the other way, I'm sorry, right there. So is there a place for large vehicles separate of the front pumps? In other, in other words, RVs, dies, semis?
So I believe this is the diesel canopy right here, and that's where those vehicles would need to go.
Come in, I got it. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's why there's two. Makes sense. Okay, any questions, gentlemen? All right, we got a public hearing on this one. Anyone wishes to speak against this sign variance? Would you please come forward, state your name, you have five minutes. Seeing none, we'll move on to anyone who wants to speak in favor. Just come on.
Hey, guys, my name is Patricia Barnador. I actually use that particular gas station because I drive a twenty-one-year-old Jeep Rubicon when the days are fair, and she has a soft top. And I'll say that to stay competitive, they're gonna have to have some digital signs there, or otherwise Buc-E's probably gonna eat their lunch. I think that it's really good that folks can see that they're competitively prized coming in and out of that area, and also gives them better direction. You see, I don't use those regular pumps. I actually use the commercial pumps back there because I'm looking for marine grade. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wish to come up and speak in favor?
Good evening. Chris Posey here on behalf of the applicant, willing to answer any questions that the board may have.
Gentlemen, any questions?
I do have a question in regards to this site. Is your sign request remarkably different than you would have at any other site with a similar store, canopies for gasoline and canopies for the other fuels?
No, sir. It's a very standard package that Circle K puts forth with bought majority of their sites in the state of Georgia and North Florida. Especially where they're adding a diesel pump, like what their high-flow diesel pumps, like what they're adding at this particular location.
Any other questions, ladies and gentlemen? I think we're good, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to come up and speak in favor? Seeing none, move to you Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve ZV dash two-five dash one-five as presented.
Second.
Properly motioned and seconded, all in favor? Against? Got it, thank you, ma'am. Let's go to forty-nine. Are we, are we ready for forty?
Yes, sir.
Seven.
Forty-seven? All right, Mr. Hartman? I can read it again if we need to. I appreciate your patience. We need to read this again. Okay.
Okay, this is for, good evening Commissioners, this is for abandonment nineteen dash three, two-forty-one Broadway Street. This is for an abandonment nineteen dash three. This is for the applicant F-eight LLC and Michael W. Griffith. This is the abandonment of a unimproved area on the west boundary of parcel zero-four-zero-two-six-seven-three. The address is two-forty-one Broadway Street. Parcel ID is zero-four-zero-two-six-seven-three, and the area of the property is point-zero-one-two acres, five-hundred-and-thirty square feet. Source of the title is Broadway Street. Present use of, of the right-of-way is a unused, unimproved alleyway or easement. This section of the easement has been in use as it currently has for several years. There's no evidence of the alley having been used by the general public. Potential uses for the future would be that the public will continue to benefit from the ability to use the right-of-way for the access and/or utilities. Benefits to the public in continuing usage would be the public will continue to benefit from the ability to use the alley for access to adjacent parcels and other utilities. If, if the benefit for the public in the abandonment would be that the abandonment would return the property to the tax digest. So as required by our ordinance, staff has reviewed the application from F-eight LLC and Michael W. Griffith for the abandonment of an unopened alley adjacent to the portion of, as shown in, on the next slide here. In accordance with section two-thirteen dash forty-four, a public hearing will be held to determine whether the proposed abandonment has ceased to be used by the public and no longer serves any useful public purpose, and that's why we're here tonight. This is the property location. It's bordered, bordered by...sorry. Forest Park Road and Broadway Street on the right. You can see here, the highlighted red area would be the ten-foot area that would be abandoned in width, and the length of it is fifty-three feet long. It would span the whole property on Lot eleven there, as shown. This is a zoomed-in version of it. I had my, one of my engineers go out and look at the site. He took a couple of photos. This is the south direction view of the area in question, and this is the north direction view. We have the opportunity for utilities and other folks to make comments. This is an email to Mr. Maurice Postal at our Community Development Plan and Zoning Department stating that Georgia Power did not have any issues with this abandonment at this location. We, we place an ad in the newspaper for abandonments for two weeks and also post a sign at the property. We have not received any public comments during those, during the comment period. I did, however, receive yesterday an open record request from the neighbor. If I go back, I can point out the neighbor on who did this open records request. The neighbor at this property, Mr. Proctor, put in an open record request requesting information about this abandonment. Our open records request procedure, when you make an open records request, you have five days to get back to the, to the person that's requesting that. That was made yesterday. We have a duty to get back to them on Monday, the nineteenth. At this time, we have not responded back to Mr. Proctor. These are gonna be your possible motions. The engineering department, service department is in agreement with this abandonment as per the motion at the bottom, but I'll let this now open up for, you know, any discussions that need to occur about this abandonment.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, sir.
Aaron, is there an issue with that open records request?
No.
Thank you. All right, it's a public hearing. I want to open it up to anybody who wishes to speak against this abandonment?
Again, it's Patricia Barnador. I'm not really necessarily against the abandonment. I'm against the fact of enriching one neighbor. I think that both neighbors should be able to carve that up equally and buy it from us as a taxpayer. I think that's more equitable and more fair. Apparently, the other neighbor's interested, even though they haven't stepped forward. And actually, I think that that's a much fairer situation than just enriching one person on one side. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in favor? Or against? I'm, we're against.
My name's Mike Kennedy, and I had a question looking at the plot. Is it actually 20 feet wide? And then what are we going to do with the other 10 feet? If we approve this?
The other, the other neighbor can ask for it.
The neighbor can?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you can, if there's an alley behind you, and in a lot of cases, those alleys have things built on them already, or they've got fences on them, you know, and, and as long as we don't need it for any utility purpose, sometimes we'll abandon something, but we retain the right for utilities.
Okay.
I think that answers your question.
Yeah, I think it does. What I was trying to see is that one neighbor couldn't get the whole thing.
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
When, when, when an alley's abandoned, one, half goes to one side, half goes to the other, unless the other neighbor would sign off to give it to the other.
Thank you for the call.
And then they'd have to reapply.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in, against? Okay. Close that portion. Any, did I do in favor? I've gotten lost. Okay. We have it? Okay, anybody want to come up and speak in favor? Would you please state your name? You'll have five minutes.
Victoria Griffith. We own the property. This will go back on the tax digest. We're only taking half of it, and we've applied for this in 2019. I'm just trying to patiently wait and push it along. And we do know other neighbors have taken their property knowing that it's not theirs, but that's okay, I think, with most of our neighbors. And our, the Proctors have already, if you come out tonight or tomorrow, they've already staked their 10 feet, so they're probably going to ask for their abandonment as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, anybody else in favor? Seeing none, we'll close that portion. Commissioners? Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we'll move to approve AB-19-3 as presented. Second. All righty. So it's Commissioner Neal, Mr. Clark. Properly motioned and seconded. All in favor? Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to number forty-nine. Approve three nominations for consideration of appointment to serve on the Glen Brunswick Memorial Hospital Authority. The hospital authority will make the final appointment. The applicants are as follows: Katina Tindall, Christine Mulligan, Courtney Popwell, Hank Stewart, John George, Mary Ann Stonefield. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to put forth three names for consideration for the hospital authority for their final decision in appointment. And those names would be Courtney Popwell, Hank Stewart, and Katina Tindall.
Second. All right. We have three names, motion and properly motioned and seconded. All in favor, or in any discussion? None? All in favor? Thank you. Number, number fifty. Consider appointing one citizen to the Glen County Board of Elections and Registration to serve the unexpired term of Mr. Tommy Clark, as well as a new term beginning July 1, 2025, ending June 30, 2029. The applicants are Sandy Dean and Kathleen Gallagher-Duff. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to nominate Kathleen Gallagher-Duff as our candidate for the Board of Elections and Registration.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Sandy Dean.
So we vote one at a time? Okay. We have two, two names. So the first one was Kathleen Gallagher-Duff. All in favor? Raise your right hand.
You didn't get a second, did you?
No seconds needed.
You don't need it, I think. Commissioner Neal? Commissioner Duncan? Commissioner Tosterson?
For Kathleen.
For Kathleen. Those against that nomination?
You don't need an against.
You don't need an against?
Just need four, four votes are required to, to
So we got three?
Yeah. Then you go and do the next candidate.
All right, so Commissioner Booker, you nominated Sandy Dean?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor of Ms. Dean? Raise your hand. You got it, Ronby? Okay, thank you. It's Sandy Dean. I'm sorry. I was moving on. No public comment tonight, executive session. Do we need any? No executive session. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay, properly motioned and seconded. All in favor? Thank you.